Before we get started, I'd like to share a couple of Audience House rules. Audience members, while in the Art Museum, please refrain from actively campaigning for a candidate. Audience members, please also refrain from applauding until the final candidate has provided closing remarks and the moderator has concluded the event. Sharing the stage with me is Jordan Williams from 12 News. Jordan will be the moderator for this forum. Please help me welcome Jordan.
Thank you all so much for being here. I am Jordan Williams, the evening anchor at 12 News, your home for ABC 12 and NBC 12 here in Southeast Texas. At 12 News, we work hard every day to put Southeast Texas first, and part of that is making sure that you are informed as we share your stories and learn about what's happening in our community. I am honored to be the moderator this afternoon. A few more rules that I'll share for the candidates before we begin this afternoon. They will each have two minutes for opening statements. We are timing this, and there is an alarm that will sound in the room. We're going to demonstrate that right now so that you are not alarmed. Not a fire drill, don't worry. That's just the clock for our candidates. So they'll have two minutes for opening statements. I'm going to be sharing questions that were submitted by you, the chamber members, and vetted by the chambers committee. Candidates will have initially two minutes to respond to our questions. We should note a couple of our candidates. Councilman Mike Getz and Councilman Chris Durio are presently at Beaumont City Council, where a meeting continues. We anticipate they will be joining us sometime during the course of this town hall. So initially, candidates will have two minutes to respond. We should remind you, this is a forum and not a debate, and candidates cannot reference their opponents directly or indirectly. You will be warned, and if you continue to do so, you will be penalized. We'll skip you for a question. So that's the ground rules. Let's get started with the opening statements. We'll begin with Mr. Corey Crenshaw.
Well, thank you all to the Chamber of Commerce and for all the guests here and for the viewers at home watching us for allowing me to be here and speak about why I am running Corey Crenshaw for Ward 1 of City Council of Beaumont. Let me begin by saying, I love Beaumont. What makes Beaumont great are our people, but our people deserve better leadership. And when it comes to leadership, the three areas that I'm most focused on. Number one, public safety. We've got to do a better job with crime. We've got to do a better job of safer streets. We've got to end the war on our firefighters. Number two, fiscal responsibility. Right now, our city is $3.5 million over budget. That is unacceptable. We've got to do a better job with our money. And number three, I firmly believe that we need to focus on citizen oversight and citizen involvement in our government. I do not believe enough people, enough citizens of Beaumont, are able to serve on committees, are able to serve on commissions that we have, and we maybe need to expand the number of committees, and we definitely need to broaden the scope of people that are serving. It seems to me like we always have the same people serving in different committees, and I think that we need to focus on bringing in more taxpayers and more citizens so that City Hall knows what the people want and what the people deserve. Again, my name is Corey Crenshaw. I greatly appreciate you inviting me here, and I look forward to this spirited forum.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stiles.
Hello. I want to thank the Beaumont Chamber of Commerce for putting this forum on, and thank you all for coming today. I look at myself as a seasoned, no-nonsense leader. I was in the House of Representatives and represented you all in Southeast Texas for eight terms in 16 years. I have a unique understanding of the city government and state government. I bring a wealth of information, a wealth of experience. One of the things that I'm most proud of and very proud of was the fact that I kept the funding together for Major Drive from 105 to Interstate 10. I kept water from being moved from East Texas to Houston and Central Texas and West Texas whenever the inter-basin water rights were fighting. You'll see right now Houston's being invited to move their water west at this time. I'm very pleased that Lamar University is part of the Texas State University system, where they receive adequate and fair funding. I was responsible for that. I also am responsible for many other things, passing 157 bills and six constitutional amendments. I was honored as the Texas Chamber of Commerce legislator of the year, the Texas Medical Association legislator of the year, the Department of Public Safety Officers Association legislator of the year, and here in Southeast Texas, the Associated Building and Contractors gave me the Free Enterprise Man of the Year. I left the legislature in 1999 and was transferred to Dallas with my company, Trinity Industries, where I started as a group president and ended up being the senior vice president of the corporation. I had 15,000 employees that worked for me, dealt with billions of dollars.
And we'll pause the thought right there. Nicely done. Mr. Hilliard.
Again, I reiterate what Corey said. I thank you all for being here and for taking time out of your busy days and realizing how important this election is to all of us and to the city. My name is Joey Hilliard. I'm running for Ward 2. I'm a small business owner. I started from scratch 34 years ago. I employed 25 people. We service Louisiana all the way to Austin. I'm an Army vet. I heard the call when I was a senior in high school to serve my country, to give something back. I met a lot of great men and women in the process of doing that. And I also heard the call when BISD was in turmoil. I tried to run for the school board three different times, and of course, the court shot it down because of gerrymandering with the maps. And I was, you know, the kids are important. The kids are our future, and you know, that's one of the things I want to focus on is our kids. You know, the rise in crime, we need to give our kids purpose, and that's one of my key roles is to want to give kids purpose, to expand the civil service exam, allow all kids with the GED or high school diploma with a good record to take the exam in the city, then send them to school, and we begin to build our ranks from the inside, partnering with the unions. Another great thing, the trades. For some reason, somewhere, we forgot what it meant to work with our hands, and people can earn a great living, people can build a home, buy a car, and raise a family working with their hands, and I think we need to get back to that. I served on the Board of Adjustments for 15 years and have been proud to do that, and you know, I love this city. We have some amazing people that live here, and somewhere, somehow, somebody made us believe that we weren't, and I want to bring that back. I want people to know that this is a beautiful city full of beautiful people, and this is where the oil started.
Thank you, sir. Come on up. Ladonna Sherwood is joining us as well. She is a candidate for Ward 3. We'll give her a second to get on stage here. We're in the midst of opening statements. You have two minutes for that. We'll let you breathe and get situated, and then we'll be going through up and down the table here with some of the questions that were submitted by chamber members. So grab your mic. Ladonna Sherwood, ladies and gentlemen.
Hi, I'm Ladonna Sherwood. I'm super excited to be here. Of course, the life of a candidate, you're everywhere. I am a wife, a mother, a small business owner, and a chamber member. I work in Medicare, with Medicare and Medicaid. I own a non-emergency medical transportation company where we work with taking the elderly and the indigent to and from doctor's appointments, giving seniors access to care. I am also a licensed childcare administrator, so I work with youth that are in foster care. I am also a licensed QMHP, so I do some counseling for youth that are in foster care. In addition to those jobs, I am a full-time mom, and I grew up here in Beaumont. I went to Lamar University, and I am super excited about running for City Council in Ward 3. I've been a community advocate for quite some time, focusing on get-out-the-vote initiatives. I also serve as a precinct chair for one of the Jefferson County precincts that is considered one of the highest voting precincts in Jefferson County because I prioritize getting out and making sure that people know when elections are happening and abreast of what's going on in and around the community as far as elections are concerned. I am a person that is very proud of being born and raised here in Beaumont, and what's actually compelled me to run is that I want to leave Beaumont in a place where our kids and our future generations can be proud, as I am, to have been born and raised in Beaumont, things of that nature. Yeah, I think that's pretty much it. Ladonna Sherwood.
Perfect. Well, welcome. All right, we're going to go to some of the questions, and again, we're going to work down the table. We'll begin with Mr. Crenshaw. You will each have two minutes to respond to this question. In your view, what are the one or two major issues facing the city of Beaumont?
Without a doubt, crime and public safety are the biggest issues facing Beaumont. We have got to do a better job reducing crime and having safer neighborhoods. Let's start with the police. I think that we need more police officers on our streets, and not just police officers reacting to calls for service. We need more proactive police officers out there. We need to go to these businesses that are struggling with crime. I had three phone calls today from businesses that are desperate for help. They were unaware of the real-time crime center that Beaumont PD has recently implemented. That is a great thing. I was able to immediately get them in contact with Lieutenant Cody Courts, who is the head of that program, so that we can link those businesses' cameras to our network so that we can help with solving crime and preventing crime. Beaumont has to do a better job with the crime, and the city council must do a better job of getting our police officers the resources that they need to bring those rates down. Number two on public safety is our firefighters. Right now, our firefighters do not have a contract. We have got to get our firefighters a fair and reasonable contract. Part of the situation with public safety is the overtime right now with our firefighters. We have got to do a better job with that. That includes giving our medics civil service protection and ending the constant lawsuits that the city is waging against the firefighters in our courts that are costing taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Mr. Stiles, same question. Two major, one or two major issues facing the city of Beaumont? And if you will grab the mic, I'm sorry.
I think crime's a very important area for us to start. 10 years ago, we had 260 sworn police officers in Beaumont. Today, we have 260 sworn police officers in Beaumont. We need more police officers. We need to involve ourselves in community policing. I see the police officers out at the Neighborhood Association meetings. They do a great job of making sure that people understand what's going on. They understand what's going on with scams. They understand what's going on with crime in their neighborhoods. We need to do something with our youth crime. That's one of the main things that we're doing, and we have to do that by partnering ourselves, the business communities partner itself with BISD and the private schools in town, and talk about what we're going to do for after-school programs and how we're going to involve these teenagers in something besides getting into trouble. We need to look at our community policing and our community associations and make those stronger. Not all wards have those. I think economic development is one of the main topics that we need to concentrate on. For the first time in 20 years, the city of Beaumont has an Economic Development Director. Her name is Christina Loki. She's going to do a very good job. She understands her place, and she understands how she's going to collaborate with all the other role players, all the other stakeholders, from Entergy, from the port, from the city, from the Southeast Texas Economic Development Foundation, and from the other area chambers of commerce. We need to make sure and focus on those things that are going important to create new jobs in Beaumont, to help small businesses and help large businesses. We need to create more foot traffic in downtown Beaumont. The mural fest is a good example of what was done with the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hilliard.
I'll have to emphasize the same thing, crime, but education, I think they go hand in hand. I say this everywhere I go, we have to give our kids purpose. I think we've lost that somewhere down the road. I believe that the civil service exam will help build our ranks in the fire, police, paramedic, EMS. I believe offering that test to these kids and giving them an opportunity at a better life. I believe partnering with the unions and bringing these crafts, you know, the same thing. All of us remember high school when in the back of the room was the Army, Navy, Air Force Marines, and why not have welders, plumbers, pipe fitters, police officers, firemen, EMTs, so that these kids know that there's another avenue? You know, I say we strengthen our parks. We add more things for kids to do at the parks. I remember growing up, and we spent weekends at the parks. We spent after-school at the parks. Why not put more basketball courts in, tennis courts, pickleball courts, things like that that give kids purpose? Give them jobs. Help them get jobs. You know, I think we should partner with BISD more. Find out what we could do to get a hold of our education process and make it better and give our kids a better future. I mean, we take that for granted, but our kids are our future. They're our basis. Everything will change when that does, and so we should concentrate a lot on our kids and what we can do as a community to make them better. Number two is infrastructure. You know, there's people in my ward that when it rains and they flush their toilets, it backs up into their bathtubs. A lot of elderly people can't get in their cars and drive to the convenience store to use it. It's a shame that we live in a modern city and there's people's toilets that won't flush. I believe the city's failed them in that sense. I understand there's grant money that should be used toward that, but why it hasn't, I have no idea. You know, I believe that the crime and education go hand in hand. I believe infrastructure should be a big part of what we do. We make our roads better. We make sure people have lit streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sherwood.
And particularly in Ward 3, I think that youth engagement is going to be huge, and I think that when we focus on youth engagement, then we'll be able to tackle some crime issues. I just choose to think about it as far as youth engagement because I think that after we look at the numbers, oftentimes, our violent crime offenders are people that are reading on the third grade level. So I think that if we start implementing more reading programs, I volunteer with kids. I'm a roar advocate, and I think that so is your communication. You change what you can do and what people think about you with your ability to articulate. So education and youth engagement, mentorship programs. I know that the city has a mentorship program, and I think that as a city leader, we can be found going into the schools and engaging with the youth, giving them something to look forward to as far as work-study programs, and making sure that we're partnering with schools in Lamar and all the different things that we can do to engage our youth, to make our future better for the young people. That's my top issue and an area that I, working with foster youth, what I realize is oftentimes there are people that are forgotten, and they feel unseen, they feel unheard, particularly young people. They want somebody to talk to. They want somebody that they can resonate with, and also that's going to keep it real with them, that's going to believe in them but have been through struggles that can relate to them, and that matters, and they listen, and they'll be better citizens and more productive, and I think that that's something that we can focus on. And my next issue would probably be infrastructure because I think by Ward 3 being the oldest and the largest ward, I know all about the toilets that are backing up. It happens at my house. So I think infrastructure, so goes Ward 3, really so goes Beaumont. We need to be focused on building better infrastructure because I think that will help our economic development. When we get better streets and drainage and roads and sidewalks, and we can make parts of Beaumont walkable and things like that, economic development will be better.
Okay. Thank you. Our second question speaks to some of the concerns you all just shared about safety. How do you plan to work with law enforcement and the community to address perceived concerns about crime and public safety? And Ms. Sherwood, we'll begin with you and then work our way down the row.
I think that working with law enforcement is huge. We need to find out ways that we can be more involved with law enforcement, right? There are a lot of things, law enforcement, fire, and police, they are the lifeblood of our community. I wouldn't want that job in any capacity, and I think they're modern-day saints, and oftentimes, they're dealing with a huge amount of issues, right? The community needs to be found supporting them and backing them up in whatever capacity that they possibly can, and I'm looking forward to working with them, particularly with youth engagement and things of that nature. But I think that as far as crime is concerned, like, the main thing that we need to be doing with the police is making sure that we have enough of them, that they have the tools and whatever they need, and that we're backing them up. But we got to also think about mental health. A lot of times with our young people, I don't think that we're addressing the mental health concerns, and I know that recently, the city of Beaumont has implemented some mental health officers and things of that nature so that when they go out to community issues and there's a mental health crisis, if we have people that are trained in that, that would actually help us help other people if we're found backing policies that help mental health cases and things like that. And the youth, I'm working together with young people and giving them opportunities to be a part of community policing, like youth councils that can go out and volunteer and get involved and ride along and be a part of what policing is. And I think that when we involve the community with police, that'll improve all of our community relations as far as tackling what we can do to be better support for police, if I understood the correction correctly.
Thank you. Mr. Hilliard.
I think we need to start with education, that we need to teach our kids that the police are not the enemy, that the police are here to help us, and I think that happens by putting them in the schools, starting them in the schools, starting in the elementary, the junior highs. Let the police be in there to show what they, what we're about and what they're here to do. They are not the enemy. They're our friends. And like, I'll reiterate what you said, that it's, it's a hard job. And, you know, I believe that we should have mental health workers that go with these. If I'm not mistaken, we have one now to work with 260 officers. And so, you know, the mental health goes both ways. It's not just with the people in the community, but also the officers and the things they have to deal with and the things they have to bring home. You know, I, same with the firefighters, you know. It's a hard job. A lot of us don't understand that. You know, we, we, we work our job and go home, but they work their job and go home, and they're having to deal with terrible things. And so, I think that not only do we teach kids at a younger age that the police are not the bad guy, but we also work to make sure that our officers are mentally, their mental health is good and that they have the resource there if it's needed. And also on the street, when we have situations where policing's not going to work, where we have someone with mental health issues, that we have someone that can address that. So, you know, reiterate, give them the tools they need, you know. Make sure they have more than the bad guys. And more officers on the street, you know. I, I think that that's important, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. Just to restate the question, we're talking about how you would plan to work with law enforcement and the community to address perceived concerns about crime and public safety.
I think it's very important to realize that police are our friends, but also, as I mentioned earlier, we need more policemen on the street. Cops and kids are great programs. We have mental health problems more than we all realize, and I think it's good that the city is having someone that's a mental health specialist work with the police. One of the things that I think is very important is that, are these real-time crime center, the thing we have in place, because I've seen it work and seen that they have been able to catch criminals right whenever their crimes occur or shortly afterwards. And I think that the city needs to sign up for that. It doesn't do anything in your home. If you sign up, if you have a ringtone, a ring bell, a camera bell, a camera on your, on your home, you can sign up with the city. They don't come into your house. They put it on the real-time crime center. And if something was to happen on your street, they can go back and they can check that with you. They're not hooked up all the time, and it's very, it's a very good tool. One of the things that was mentioned late recently at a neighborhood association meeting was some of the parks don't have cameras, and we need to put those in, in these cameras in these parks. Speaking of parks, I think it's very important that we have these parks, and we need to protect the equipment that's there. We have equipment in these parks that children cannot safely use. There's metal shards that are, that are showing. Some of the middle, some of the equipment's put together with duct tape. And I think in a city, a city this size, we should be able to do more than with our park equipment than cover it with duct, duct tape. Some of the parks are being rejuvenated and redone, but not all of them are. And I, I know the biggest park that's used is Rogers Park, and that equipment out there is horrible.
Mr. Crenshaw.
Thank you. I have a long history here in Beaumont with working with both law enforcement and the community on issues of public safety. I was appointed by the governor in 2014 to be your criminal district attorney. After that, I served as your county court at law judge, appointed with bipartisan support by the commissioners' court. And for the last seven years, I've had a law firm here in Beaumont where I've continued to maintain an excellent relationship with the law enforcement and with community partners to do what we can to try to make things safer and better in Beaumont. The Beaumont Police Department knows me. It's the reason why I believe that my campaign has the endorsement of the Beaumont Police Officers Association. We developed several programs while I was district attorney to help with crime. One in particular was the crime abatement program, which we did over on 11th Street. Crime was out of control on 11th Street, and we implemented the program. We made hundreds of arrests, and crime did go down on 11th Street. And I believe it's time for another one. We also need to do more with nuisance abatement. I have a long history of doing that when I worked as a prosecutor in various offices on doing things to reduce crime proactively and go to the source instead of waiting on a crime to occur. I can think of an apartment complex on Dowell across from Jason's Deli where we have hundreds of calls for service every year. That is a constant drain on the resources of our police department. We need to work with our district attorney's office, with our DA Keith Giblin, and the city, and the police, and get together and do something about those sources of crime and bring those numbers down.
Right on the mark. We're going to transition now to a question about the economy. And specifically, what are your economic development priorities for the city of Beaumont? We'll start with you, Mr. Crenshaw.
Economic development, absolutely. And I don't want to sound like a broken record, but it's going to be hard to recruit businesses to Beaumont with high crime, failing schools, and a litany of issues that we have with infrastructure, drainage, and water. So we've got to do a better job with that. Beaumont has such an amazing history. You look at energy. Energy put Beaumont on the map with Spindletop. We need to do more to celebrate that. Why do we not have an annual celebration of Spindletop in conjunction with the Texas Energy Museum to make and celebrate what started Beaumont with that gusher? And I believe that we could do a better job of recruiting energy companies to build and rejuvenate some of these buildings in downtown Beaumont, to bring more economic development and make downtown Beaumont better. While there are some things that have been proposed for economic development in downtown Beaumont that I do not agree with, such as the canal or Riverwalk or whatever you want to call it, I do believe that Beaumont needs a convention center hotel in downtown Beaumont. I don't know if you've ever tried to have a friend come in to stay for the weekend in Beaumont. It can be very difficult to find a hotel, and sometimes very difficult to find a hotel that's acceptable. We need to do a better job. That would absolutely help us with economic development. But on a broader scale, we've got to do a better job with crime, education, and infrastructure. I believe that we're going to have a bond election coming up in November, and one of the key parts of that bond should be infrastructure. And I will be all for infrastructure spending that will encourage economic development and bring businesses and people to this city that we love.
Thank you, Mr. Crenshaw. Mr. Stiles?
One of the key things we have in Southeast Texas is water. So many people have tried to get it. So many people have tried to move for it, and we just won't have it. We've been able to take care of our water. That's why we have industry coming here. I don't think about the bad things about Beaumont. I think about the good things about Beaumont, like a willing and trainable workforce. We sure we have crime, but in 19, in 2022, the last statistics available, 21% of our major crimes and violent crimes in Beaumont have dropped. We can talk about all the bad things, but we need to talk about the positive things. We need to talk about, not only do we have a good career center at our BISD campus, which I was at last week with, with a caravan tour, which I would suggest as chamber members, you need to avail yourself of that, and look at the opportunities that we have. They have 100% graduation percentage. They bring in many people that look at the jobs. They hire people out of their, their associate, they graduate with an associate degree and are able to go into colleges. And most of them are participating in those programs. If you talk about the bad things in Beaumont, then bad things are going to continue to happen. We need to talk about the positive things. We need to talk about the positive things that are going on with economic development downtown. Like I mentioned, we have a, for the first time in 20 years, we have an economic director. That is going to work. We're going to be able to bring small businesses in. We're going to be able to bring in mid-sized businesses. And you're going to see more businesses come in because of the chemical opportunities and the Class I railroads that we have and the interstate that we have. And we have an education institution that educates people through the Lamar Institute of Technology, that, that trains process operators.
Mr. Hilliard.
I, I believe that the, the sign on Beaumont right now says closed, and I wanted to say opened. You know, I want to stimulate hometown entrepreneurs. I want the city to, to give grants, to give tax abatement to these heroes that are stepping out to start up a business and say, we want you to succeed. We want you to prosper, because when you do, the city prospers. I think that we should, these RV parks that workers are coming in to work on these refineries, they're not paying into tax. They're not paying their fair share. And I believe that the city should look at that and say, hey, if you stay in a hotel, you pay an occupancy tax. Why not when you come and bring your trailer to work at our refineries, why not also pay a tax and pay your fair share? You know, I think it's important. You know, I think crime and education. Education is one of the big things. You hear, we would have moved here, but the education. And so, I think once we begin to fix the education, we reduce the crime, that you'll see more people come here. But right now, people don't want to come here because of the education system. And I think that's terrible, because I'll reiterate what Mark said. We, we have some amazing people that live here. We have some smart entrepreneurs. We have some engineers, doctors. We have so many wonderful people. And for some reason, we've, we've, we've lost that, we've lost that. And you know, when, when, when we hit troubled times with my son, the city came out and they, they wrapped their arms around us. People we didn't even know came and wrapped their arms around us. And I think that that's what we need to do as a city, is say enough. Okay, we're, this is a great city. This is where the oil started. This is where we revolutionized the world in this city. And I think it's important that we capitalize on that. And in doing so, we make Beaumont a friendly city. We, we turn the open sign on and we say, hey, we want you to come here. We want you to be a part of this amazing place with these amazing people.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. Ms. Sherwood, the question again, what are your economic development priorities for Beaumont?
I think that Ward Three is ripe with potential. I can't express enough the importance of the historical sense of Ward Three. So many different things. Downtown is like a museum capital, right? So we could use a lot of different ways that we can incentivize economic development. And a lot of times, businesses come to Beaumont and they say, well, it's hard to work in Beaumont. It's hard to do business in Beaumont. Some of our economic development needs to start with relaxing some of these rules and red tape and stuff that's stopping people from getting in that want to come in. And we can't capitalize on public and private partnerships because we're too tight. It's too much going on. We need to relax some of those standards. I recently went to a meeting and they were talking about a food truck park. We have lots of green spaces that we can utilize, things that we can build on, that we can capitalize, particularly in Ward Three. And I'm here to say that so goes Ward Three, so goes the heart of Beaumont. I'm all for downtown revitalization, but not at the cost of forgetting what we need in the North End and the South End, right? Because we need grocery stores, and we need pharmacies, and we need people that want to come in, but they don't want to do the work because it's too much red tape. I've got a friend that wanted to do a job on Concord with some affordable housing. That's economic development. People that are going to come in, buy houses, and be part of our tax base. Guess what? The city, he wanted like a curb and gutter, some, 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 some sort of help or incentive. And we can offer that. As a, as a city council person, I will be found advocating for the small business owner and incentivizing new businesses to come here and people that want to build stuff for us to help them do it and get out of the way and let them be incentivized in some kind of capacity, right? I'm super excited that Beaumont is gonna be growing, right? In my mind, I'm putting it out there, we're gonna be growing. Everybody said that Beaumont has been stagnant, but we're growing.
Thank you, Ms. Sherwood. And you will field the next question first. We hear a lot about the quality of our streets, our drainage, and the city's water and sewer systems. In your opinion, what is the most important infrastructure issue for the city of Beaumont to address? And we'll begin with Ms. Sherwood.
I think the most important thing that we need to focus on is sewage and drainer, drainage. Right now, there are so many people that have years and years worth of problems that while we know that you, there's only one way to eat an elephant, in one bite at a time. So with that being said, we've got to be found working on projects that really need to take priority. And I think that it's drainage, mostly because nobody wants sewage backing up in their house. I've got pictures in my phone where I'm like, is this my problem? Is this your problem? And we're calling the plumber, and nobody knows. That older infrastructure needs to be replaced. And, and, and I would like to start with sewage and drainage. And I'm actually happy to say, though, this past administration has put more money into sewage and drainage than we have in the last 30 years, which is a very big deal. But there's more work that needs to be done. And a part of that bond process that we're going to be coming up on, we need to put a lot of money into drainage. We need toilets that flush. We don't need flooding. We don't need people that can't, they can't walk out of, every heavy rain, it floods on East Texas Freeway, right? We need, we need to get whatever we need to, if it's pump stations or lift stations or...I'm not a plumber, but whatever it is, we need to get busy doing that so that we can drain some of this water, okay? That's my final answer.
Thank you, Ms. Sherwood. Mr. Hilliard?
I'll reiterate. Well, for me, though, it, you know, in the 80s, we all believed that every human being has the right to clean and save drinking water. And there's a lot of people in Beaumont that don't have that. Their water's brown. They bathe in brown water. You'll wash a towel, hang it, and it turns brown. A lot of people's water stinks. We, we barely make, if, I know we all get the sheets in the mail that tell the quality of our water. We barely make it, and that's unacceptable. You know, I will also reemphasize sewage, you know. I, in my travels, I've met the elderly that, that can't leave their home, and their bathtubs fill up with waste. I mean, that can't be good. And, you know, I, I don't understand why we don't fix it, why we don't do a better job of making sure that they live in a safe place and that they don't have to worry about something like flushing their toilets. I think we've come a long way, and I'm not a plumber either, but, you know, I believe plumbing was invented, what, 100 years ago? And it's, it's gotten better than it ever has. And, and why we don't take care of it is, is, is something that I really want to address. Drainage is another good thing, too. You know, building the retention ponds was amazing. Why it took us so long to do that, I don't know, but I think that maybe we need more of them. Maybe that'll, that'll help, you know. Working with engineers, working with people that know this stuff, bringing them in and saying, how do we better, how can we better, how can we make our city better? Because I believe a lot of our city were right at sea level or a little bit below, so we've got to come up with a better way. And so, you know, my first is drinking water. I think everyone deserves to have clean, fresh drinking water, you know. So, thank you.
Mr. Hilliard, thank you. Just to rephrase and restate the question, we hear a lot about the quality of streets, drainage, water, and sewer. Mr. Stiles, in your opinion, what is the most important infrastructure issue for the city of Beaumont to address?
The most important issue is the infrastructure. And like Joey said, brown water is a problem. Clean water's a problem. Water pressure's a problem. Water bills are a problem. We need to make sure that we straighten those things out. One of the things that we, our streets are in fairly good shape. In Ward One, we don't have street problems to speak of. And our ditches are clean in the areas where we don't have cupboards. But we need to watch out for our water system. And that's what's going to make economic development opportunities in Southeast Texas, especially in Beaumont. Other parts of the city depend on Drainage District Six, and they do a good job. We've got, we've got a lot of drainage opportunities that we've seen take place in the last few years because of the billions of dollars they've received in grants and what they've done with Beaumont, with Calder Avenue, and what they're expected to do on Washington Avenue. That's one of the things that as a Ward One city councilman, I'm going to have to do. I'm going to have to work with other wards, because other wards have problems. We have to, when we have to realize that we're going, if we're ever going to straighten Beaumont out, we have to make sure that we work throughout the city, not just in our own wards. We have to, we have to take care of our wards. We have to answer for our wards. But we need to work with the Charlton Pollard Neighborhoods, the North End. We need to work with Ward Two, like I was talking about Rogers Park. We need to work, we need to worry about drainage in those portions of the city where we don't have the Drainage District working or they, they can't take care of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crenshaw?
Mark, you're absolutely right about water bills. I don't know about y'all, but my water bill has doubled in the last couple of years. And I'm pretty sure I'm not using more water than I normally would. And we all remember the water crisis we had last summer with the drought, and it was a very difficult time. And it was a very difficult time. And I think our city leaders did as good of a job as they could with what they had to deal with and the resources that we had. But out of those issues, water and sewer are the top two infrastructure issues that I think that the city of Beaumont faces. And I thought it was a little insensitive and a bit tone deaf for our city leaders over the last several years to constantly raise water rates. And I get that water rates may need to go up. And I'm blessed enough to be able to absorb those increases, but there are so many people, low income and the elderly, that cannot. But Beaumont just wanted to have this across-the-board increase in water bills for everyone. And I think that was wrong. I think that we should have been more sensitive to low-income and senior citizens and done a better job at not raising the rates across the board on everyone. And I thought that that could have been done better. We have a bond issue coming up. And one of the things that I believe, by the way, I was just told, I was just appointed on the Bond Committee, which I greatly appreciate and look forward to learning more about that and making recommendations at the city council on what we do with our bond issue in November. But one of the things that I think that we absolutely need to focus on is sewer upgrades. Our water and sewer system is ancient. It's from the 1950s. And we've got to spend money to upgrade that. That's going to cost a lot of money. And I believe the bond issue's the way to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Crenshaw. Our next question, what are innovative ways to attract new businesses and young professionals to Beaumont? This time, we'll begin with Mr. Crenshaw.
Absolutely. Great question. I could have gone anywhere after I left my very first job in College Station. And I went to McAllen, worked for the Department of Justice and spent two years on the border prosecuting cases involving the Mexican cartels. And the opportunity came for me to return to Beaumont. And I wasn't really sure I was going to return to Beaumont. And I came back to Beaumont to work in the U.S. Attorney's Office. And my goodness, Beaumont has been so good to me since I've come home. If we could get people here, they absolutely would love it. And it would be a way to show, I mean, you have all these businesses across Texas. Where do they go? Austin, number one. Then they go to Houston. And then they go to Dallas. We have got a great workforce here. We have got great people here. We've got to do a better job of bringing businesses here. We need to provide tax incentives to bring businesses here. We've got a lot of empty buildings in downtown Beaumont that are real problems. And we're, see that every week lately in the news. Why not work a program where Exxon, Chevron, these big oil and energy companies can buy those buildings, redo them and turn them into sustainable spaces and corporate offices? I think it would be great to have that right there in downtown Beaumont. And we need to offer them incentives to do that. Another thing that drives me crazy is this Saturday Night Live clip about Beaumont's the most least educated city in the country. I hate that. It's awful. And the reason why we've got to fix that is we have the absolute opportunity here for people to be able to thrive and do that, but we've got to do a better job with our school system to educate our kids.
To you, Mr. Stiles.
What we've got to do is be positive about our city. We've got to be positive about the area. The hospitals try to get doctors. The doctors want to come because they're getting paid more money here than they are in Houston. But their wives come to town and they go, "I don't think so." It's because of the education opportunities that we have. We let that, we let those things dwell upon ourselves. We don't have a good reputation with our independent school district. The state took it over a few years ago. And then we've got it back. Our children are getting good educations in some schools. Fletcher Elementary, which is one of the poorer areas of town, has a grade A rating with the state. And it's because of the teachers and they're, and the parents are involved. And the same thing is going to have to happen with the other school districts, other schools in our school district, parent involvement. I always said in the legislature, if we could teach parents to be parents, we wouldn't have the problems in our schools that we have today because our teachers, who are the highest-paid, lowest-paid, highest-trained professional group in the state, have to raise the kids too besides teaching them. We need to be able to talk to people about the positive things that are here. There's 30-plus museums in Beaumont. The mural fest that was just here was a great opportunity for people at a free of charge to come in and enjoy downtown Beaumont. We need to increase our foot traffic in downtown Beaumont. And one of the problems is that we don't have, we have the same landlords in some of the buildings and they don't want to do anything. And recently, there's been a talk about, "Well, what are we going to do because we have these ordinances?" And you saw what the city did. They passed and they enforced their ordinance and we had the Gilbert Building. Now held up because of the temporary...
All right. Mr. Stiles, thank you. Our question, what are innovative ways to attract new businesses and young professionals to Beaumont? I'll turn to you, Mr. Hilliard.
Well, like I had said before, we have to cut the red tape. I think LaDonna said the same thing. We have to cut the red tape. If you go to these city council meetings, that's one of the big things, the red tape, the hoops that these people have to jump through to try to start a business. We need to streamline that. We need to make it easier for them to do that safely, but easier. It's important. That's how you track business, education. Everybody here has talked about that. It's education, you know? And you said about the doctors that, you know, "We can't get specialists here." I mean, I think we're down to one heart surgeon. You know, I mean, we've got to be able to attract these people to come to our city and the number one thing is education. I think we should partner. You know, I did a walkthrough of Harmony and there were third graders that were programming robotics. Why are we not doing that in our schools? Why are we not teaching this in our elementary school? Why are we not, why are we not changing with the times? You know, these kids are smart. You know, the idea is, is that we make our kids smarter than we were. And, you know, we can't not do that here in Beaumont. We have to, we have to, we have to change with the times and education is a big thing. You know, tax incentive, grants, especially for hometown heroes that step out, you know? Hey, the city gives you money to get started. We give you tax abatements. We say, "Hey, we're here for you. We want you to succeed. We want you to do good." And in doing so, you know, it's a satellite skip, like you said. It just, it breaks my heart because we are a very smart city. We have some amazing people here. And it really breaks my heart to see that in that, you know, I believe if somebody says it long enough, you tend to believe it, even if it's true or not. And so, I know it's not true. I know the caliber. I have employed people here for 34 years. I have, I have employed so many different walks of life and all of them are good people. Well, almost all of them. But it's, it, there is some, we have an amazing gumbo of people here. It's just amazing. And we need to all come together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. Ms. Sherwood.
Well, I think an out-of-the-box, what was the, what was the word you used?
I don't know. Innovative?
Innovative, okay. So if we're getting outside of the box, one thing that I would say is, we got to use what we got to get what we want. And I don't think a lot of times, we're doing that. Beaumont has a lot. We have a lot of green spaces. We have a lot of history. We have the best food. We have the best people. We have the best birds. I think we the Cajun capital. I mean, we don't even, we're, we got to change the narrative on what we're doing and then we can attract more, right? We want new businesses. We definitely got to relax some stuff. We can't, we got to make it easier. We own a nightclub downtown. The More Mature Hot Spot nails place downtown. Anyway, but we got to be found having places where people can go and enjoy their self-in safety and entertainment matters. I mean, entertainment matters. And we do need to be found giving incentives to small businesses and to recruit young professionals. Young people want to be places that's hip, that's hot. Mural Fest is on. Birding is on. Pickleball, all the things that we do have, we're not. We've got to change the narrative on what we're doing. And I think when we start thinking outside the box, and scared money don't make no money. So yeah, we might have to do some things to get it going, but we'll get a return on our investment and those things matter. So for me, to recruit young professionals and incentivize businesses to come, we've got to use what we already have working force and work it a little bit more. It works when you work it.
Ms. Sherwood, thank you. You'll answer this next question first. In your view, what will it take to revitalize downtown?
That's a tough one. A lot of downtown is owned by some key players, right? And they've got to want to do things and we can't make them. And unless we actually own the spaces, we're limited to what we can do. But we can welcome public and private partnerships, right? Downtown does not need to be on the backs of just taxpayers, right? Let people that want to, that want to be on the water, that want to purchase their real estate, that want to get involved in that, we just need to welcome them. We need to open our arms and bring them in and say, "Hey, we got you. We got your back and we're not going to let you fail." And then as a city, we got to be found going to these places. Because I'm reminded of what we did downtown and then when people don't show up, then you can't keep the doors open. So all of those things matter. As a city, we've all got a job to do. We've all, the city council can only do so much. The people in the community have to be found doing their part as well. But we got to be found letting them know what they can do to participate and how to get involved. Downtown is not going to be an easy fix. Downtown is going to require some outside people coming in and wanting to do it, but we got to be found doing our part to get them in there. That's my answer for downtown.
Thank you. Mr. Hilliard.
First and foremost, it's one of the things we talked about is the police. We got to have more police. That was what happened to the last time we tried to revitalize downtown, is that there was a lot of burglaries, there was a lot of crime. And so, it was taken away from the citizens of Beaumont and the civil services. So we've got to have more officers on the street to make people feel safer in downtown. People are afraid to go downtown at night and it shouldn't be that way. And so, we need to change that, you know? Like you said, you know, a lot of the real estate is owned by, I believe, two or three people. And, you know, that needs to change, you know? And support. We, as a community, have to support. You know, we've got this new, the new Renegades team that is at the Ford Park Center. And it makes me sad to look in the audience and there's probably 50 people. I mean, we love football here. I mean, this is Texas. We all love football. Why aren't we supporting it? I think the people have to come together, like you said, that the council can only do so much, but the people. And that's part of the thing, is bringing the people together. As a council, we, instead of being combative, we've got to be supportive of each other. We've got to work together because, like you said, what happens in one ward, happens in all the wards. And so, as long as we, as a council, as the people up here that are, that are carrying the voice of the people, that we should work together. If the council doesn't work together, what does it say about, what are we telling our constituents? So I think that's important. And if we're excited and we're happy about the revitalization of downtown, then I think the people would be too, you know? Another thing is to work on the homeless problem in downtown. You know, and I, that's probably a question coming up, so I'm not going to waste it on this one. But, you know, there's, it's a multi-faceted thing. And I think that with the people here, that all of us have great business minds and I think that a plan, along with community and involvement, I think there's stuff that we can do to make downtown better.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. To Mr. Stiles, again, the question, in your view, what will it take to revitalize downtown?
There's been talk today about a bond issue in November. We don't know whether that's going to happen or not. There's a Citizens Committee getting put together to listen to the facilitator to determine whether we can have a bond issue. It's been 42 years since there was a bond issue in Beaumont. For 40 years, we've been trying to build a hotel and convention center in downtown. It's time to quit talking about it. It's time to do it. One of the things that's been brought up is that wherever a hotel room would be put in downtown Beaumont, every night it's filled, there's ExxonMobil wants to have between 110 hotel nights a year in that hotel. Other industries want to have a downtown hotel. We need to have the downtown convention center. Wherever one of those rooms, it's like a $235,000 house being built in Beaumont. Year before, there was 255 houses built in Beaumont. Last year, it was 144. We need that hotel. And it's going to be up to everybody to determine whether that is going to be, that's going to establish foot traffic in downtown. I think it would make a lot of, it would make some other businesses come into downtown. I think it would be wonderful for us to have a food truck parked in downtown Beaumont next to Riverfront Park. But one of the comments earlier was, we can take some of those buildings and do something with it. If the city condemns one of those buildings and it's torn down, the only thing the city can do with it is make it a park or a municipal building. I think we already have enough parks around here. In the end, the problem is not trying to tear those buildings down and take them over. The problem is trying to get somebody to develop. And unless we have to change and develop, I don't see that coming up. That's why I think it's very important to have a hotel and convention center downtown.
Let me begin by giving a compliment to our current leadership in Beaumont. I don't know about y'all, but over the last six months, a year, I think downtown Beaumont's looking better than it's looked in a long time. Our city attorney's office has done a great job at doing more enforcement with current building owners and getting them to paint and make upgrades and fix windows and doors on their buildings. And, you know, there is some good news coming out of downtown Beaumont and I honestly do believe it is looking better. But one of the biggest complaints that we hear about downtown Beaumont is the crime. And I don't think that it's fair to just put that all in the back of Beaumont PD. It's absolutely not fair. But I think that we have to be smarter about our approach to crime in downtown Beaumont. And we need to look at greater partnerships between our law enforcement partners. Think about all the different agencies that you have that patrol downtown Beaumont or legally can. Obviously, you have the Beaumont Police Department. You also have, a lot of people don't talk about it, the Port Police. The Port Police has its own police department right there in downtown Beaumont. You have Lamar University. I think we need to encourage Lamar to take over some of these awful buildings downtown with the resources that Lamar has and turn that into spaces that we can not only have classes, but meetings and any other things that the university could do there. And we could share, and I believe that it's currently already happening, Lamar Police Department does help Beaumont PD in doing some patrols in downtown Beaumont, and we need to increase that. You also have the Constable's Office in downtown Beaumont, led by our elected Constable, Javon Pollard. I think she does a great job. And I know that she wants to be part of a solution that brings downtown back. And so, I think that if we could expand these partnerships and getting all these agencies work together, we can make downtown Beaumont safer. Also, what's important is we've got to do something to bring more businesses to downtown Beaumont. And I've said it before and I'll say it again, I think our energy companies should buy these buildings and try to rebuild them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Crenshaw. We're staying downtown for the next question. And we want to hone in on something you guys just brought up. What is your stance on the proposed downtown hotel and convention center project? And do you think it should be taxpayer-funded or funded by the private sector? We'll start with you.
One of the nicest buildings in downtown Beaumont is Edison Plaza. And I've had a conversation with one of the owners of that building who is supporting me and is a great individual and does a lot for Beaumont and commercial real estate and other areas. And he said that he is happy to sit down and talk to the city about being a private partner in a convention center hotel. And so, I think that's a great thing. And while I did not agree with the way that we bought the AT&amp;T building and we tore it down and the money that it costs taxpayers to do that, it's done, okay? So now, we've got to move forward. It's a space there. I absolutely believe that developing a convention center hotel for downtown Beaumont and for this city is a positive thing. And I will be for it.[1745.16] this city is a positive thing, and I will be for it. But I do believe that we need to work with private industry and private partners to make it economically viable. And I do believe that the opportunity is there, just like I alluded to with the owner of Edison Plaza. You also have Crockett Street right there. And while some of the partners in Crockett Street have been in the news lately and may have some issues, there are other partners in Crockett Street that are well-funded, that are committed to Beaumont. And one of those happens to be Mr. Joe Pinlin. And you look at what they did with that beautiful new restaurant, the Riverside Grill. It's absolutely so nice when you have someone come into Beaumont to visit you, and you can say, "Meet me at Riverside Grill." And it's this very nice, enjoyable place that you could be proud of, to bring people in downtown Beaumont. And I'm not saying there aren't other great restaurants in downtown Beaumont, but it is nice to have that. And I do know that there are financially viable partners in downtown Beaumont that are ready to help.
Thank you, Mr. Crenshaw. Mr. Stiles?
Well, I've already talked about the fact that I'm for the hotel convention center in downtown Beaumont. I think it will increase foot traffic, and I think there'll be more restaurants put in downtown. I think there'll be some entertainment venues that will go into downtown because of the hotel. I look for there to be a lot of opportunities that take place because of that hotel. I think downtown, as far as Lamar buying a building and trying to set up a school down there, that'll take a state appropriation. That's not going to come easy. Not when you're looking for expansion, not in this time, not in this time and place with the state legislature going in session. One of the problems that you have right now is the governor and some other people are saying for Beaumont, or any other city or county, to have some sort of election or a bond issue, it's going to take a two-thirds vote to be able to approve something like that. If that takes place, it's going to be awful cold lay in hell before there's anything built in downtown Beaumont with tax revenue. And I think that we need to realize that that bill is going to not only hurt the city, but also the county and every city in the state. There won't be any more of the public-private partnerships going on, because we won't be able to put in our part.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hilliard, again, the question, what is your stance on the proposed downtown hotel and convention center project? And do you think it should be taxpayer-funded or funded by the private sector?
Well, I agree with you. I think it would be wonderful to bring it downtown. And for me, I love telling my friends, "Hey, meet me at Chuck Sandwich Shop." So it's a wonderful place to eat, and then we have a new restaurant that is opening soon, I believe, that hearsay, which is real exciting. And so I believe that people are taking the stance to the chance to come in downtown. And I think that a hotel and convention center would be awesome. I think it would increase foot traffic, it would help stimulate growth and business. I do not believe that taxpayers should pay for it, though. I believe that there's enough entrepreneurs and business owners, like Corey said, that are willing and able, and probably chomping at the bits to do it, because they know the kind of revenue that the place will bring in. So on that note, I agree 100% we should have it, and I also agree that it should not be taxpayer-funded. But I think we have enough people here that would be willing to, because I think it would be an excellent investment.
Mr. Hilliard, thank you. Same question for you, Ms. Sherwood.
Yes, I agree. I'm with everybody else. I think that the convention, hotel and convention center would be super amazing, and I do think that it can be funded privately. Like, we don't have to be involved in everything. We can partner in some capacity if necessary, but if they want to do 100%, by all means, go for it. Knock yourself out. So, yeah, I'm for it. Thank you.
All right. I want to address, one of you predicted the homelessness question was coming. We have a few extra moments, and I think we have a chance to really dive into it. What do you think the city should do to address homelessness, or those who are on the brink of homelessness in our midst? And we'll begin with Ms. Sherwood.
Homelessness is a tricky subject, because you have to want to be helped, because you have some people that even if you attempted to help them, they would not participate. I do, however, am concerned about what we do to the least of these. So the people that don't have, the people that do not have, my heart goes out. I participate in all the homeless programs that I can possibly participate in. Oftentimes, if I cook and there's leftovers, I will warm it up and go bring it down there. I am this person. On Christmas, we don't have, we really don't do Christmas. We cook on Christmas and go pick up homeless people and bring them to eat and give toys out on Christmas. That's what we do at my house, because we have so much. So it's a subject that's near and dear to my heart. But you've got to be very careful about what you do and how you do it, and in the interest of like, maybe housing them, or offering them housing. And then you've got to be responsible for anything that can happen, or may happen, if people get abused, or taken advantage of, or any number of issues that may arise from now that we're responsible. But I do think that this is a subject that we can tackle in terms of maybe partnering with other people, not necessarily the city taking this on as something that they're going to do. Maybe, again, a public-private partnership where other people want to be, like Salvation Army, or Uncle Henry's Place, and not necessarily a city issue, but be found taking it serious and looking at it. But homelessness is a very fine line that you want to walk. That's kind of my stance on that. I am concerned, but I do not think that we need to take that on as a city-focused initiative. We can partner with people in a necessary capacity to help out as needed.
Ms. Sherwood, thank you. Mr. Hilliard?
I agree. It's a very complex situation. Other cities have used vouchers. You know, a lot of transients are moving from one place to another. You know, they offer bus tickets, and they say, "Do you want to go wherever you want to go? The city will pay to send you." You know, we've also heard about a campground, where we build them a facility with showers, and we partner with business to offer washers, dryers. But then again, you have the same thing. You have a small city, the same thing that happens in a big city will happen there. You'll have drugs, you'll have all the things. And so it could strain our social services, and our police, and our fire. So it's a very complex and very delicate thing. I believe that you get on the ground with the people that are involved, the Henry's Place, some other's place, you know, community churches, and you say, "What is it that the city, what is your recommendation?" You know, and there again, that's the whole point of, you know, it's an awesome responsibility as a councilman to speak for 20,000 people, but you have to listen to those people, too. So we work together as a council, show unity, and we go to these places that that's what they do, and we say, "How can the city help you? How can we make it better? What can we do as a city to help combat this homeless issue?" You know? Will it take more mental health workers? What is it that we need to do? And so it's listening. A big part of being a leader is listening, listening to others that know what's going on, and help you make decisions in that sense. And that's the cool thing about, is being a council that's unified, that no matter what, we stick together and we listen. And I think that's important.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. Again, the question, what do you think the city should be doing to address homelessness, or those on the brink of homelessness who are in our midst?
Well, like Ladonna said, to get help, you've got to want help. And the problem that we have is there's so many people that are homeless in the community that want to be homeless. We've had, we need to worry about people's property rights. We need to worry about where these things are showing up, and where these places are showing up in neighborhoods. I don't believe the city has a place in it. I think that the fact that the Salvation Army, some other place, Uncle Henry's Place, those places and those private organizations can help, and people can give money to those things if they want to. But the city does not need to participate in homelessness problem.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles. Mr. Crenshaw?
I was recently shown some emails between a business owner on Calder and the city manager. And let me tell you, businesses on Calder and businesses across the city of Beaumont are furious about the city's failure to adequately address the homeless issue. And I'm not here to blame any particular politician, but I will tell you that in the last couple of years, the city has really lost its momentum that it had going two years ago on the homeless issue. And I have to be careful when I give credit, but I'm going to give credit to Mike Getz. Mike Getz and the Homeless Coalition had a plan in place that they were advocating, and I'm not saying it's perfect, I'm not saying it has to be what we do, but it's the best plan I've heard, and it's what other cities have done. And the idea was that you would have a homeless compound in an area of town that is away from most of your businesses. And I believe the area that was proposed, where the city already owned a bunch of land, where you did not have a lot of businesses around it, was near MLK and Cardinal Drive. And at this compound, you would have the churches and the various organizations that wanted to, would participate in providing meals and services to the homeless there. And again, it's not a perfect situation, but other cities have done it. It has helped with the homeless problem, and it won't cure it overnight. But the people that do want help would then have a place that they could go, that would get them away from businesses on Calder, homes in our neighborhoods, and businesses across the city that struggle with the homeless issue and have very little recourse. This business owner that I'm talking about had to go and clean up human waste that is daily left at her business. And right now, our city leaders seem to be tone deaf.
Thank you, Mr. Crenshaw. This is our final question. Beaumont has a negative perception among its residents and those from outside our area. What will you do to change the perception of our city? We'll begin with Mr. Crenshaw.
I'll go back to the Saturday Night Live skit, calling Beaumont the least educated city in America. What they don't tell you in that Saturday Night Live skit is that we are a petrochemical city. Our community here was built with Spindletop. We broke up the Standard Oil Rockefeller monopoly that had a stranglehold on the US with Spindletop. And because of that, and because of our rich history with refineries and the plants in this area, people do not need to graduate high school and go and get a college degree in whatever they need, and spend tens, hundreds of thousands of dollars getting a degree. And they can, with a high school education, get a job and a plan and some vocational training, and they can make over $100,000 a year working in these refineries and plants with great, solid jobs, with phenomenal benefits, working for some of the richest companies in the country, and provide for their families. That is a positive thing, and that's why Beaumont, one of the reasons why Beaumont does not have as educated, quote, "of a population" as other cities may. But it is something that we should embrace and be proud of, and share that when someone wants to ridicule us and tell us that we're uneducated. I think Beaumont is a place of great prosperity. We have wonderful people here, we have Lamar University, we have all these museums downtown, we have the petrochemical industry, we have great fishing, great outdoors. This is a rich community, and we have got to do a better job of celebrating that and promoting that. And I truly believe, if we can get a handle on crime and do better with our school system, Beaumont will be better.
Thank you, Mr. Crenshaw. Mr. Stiles?
I look at Beaumont, and I see ExxonMobil, one of the largest facilities they have in the world. I look at Beaumont, and I realize that there's a lot of opportunity here. We talk about Lamar University, we talk about the Lamar Institute of Technology. We could talk about our own town, where our fire chief wants to put students in high school through a career technology training to be firefighters and EMS workers, where they can get out and go to LIT and come out making $65,000 a year. And if they're working overtime, like a average fireman, they're going to make about $100,000 a year. There's a lot of positive things that happen here. We look at our entertainment opportunities that we have in downtown. We look at the fresh water that we have. We look at the willing, and able, trainable workforce. Sure, we have problems with crime. Every city has problems with crime. But we've had a great turnaround the last couple of years, because the violent crime is down in Beaumont, and we don't talk about that. You know, Saturday Night Live comes on too late on Saturday night for me to watch. So I don't know whether they talk bad about Beaumont or not. They shouldn't. You would think they would have other things that's going on in the world for them to talk bad about besides Beaumont. But when you look at Beaumont, and you have to say, "We need to be involved as a chamber of commerce." We need to be involved with our public education opportunities. We need to be involved with our downtown opportunities. We need to be involved, if the city council's meeting, we need to go over to the city council and try to work on those things and see what's going on. We need to work on crime. You know, it's better to have people educated rather than have them incarcerated. We've got one of the largest criminal justice complexes ever built in the United States, and it's right here in southeast Texas. Provided thousands of jobs, provided thousands of permanent jobs. And those things take time to build, and they provided a lot of good opportunities for people in southeast Texas.
Again, the question, Beaumont has a negative perception among its residents and those from outside the area. What will you do to change the perception of the city? Mr. Hilliard?
Well, I believe that you lead by example. And I think that having a unified council that speaks highly, talks highly, and acts highly is the start. That we don't run our city down, like, you know, I hate to, we do. We have hunting, we have fishing, we have all the amazing things. But what we, but what people don't understand is that the world runs because of us. We are the reason that people have cars, people have tires, people have gas and oil. We are that reason. And we forget that. I mean, if Beaumont goes down, the whole country goes down. And we forget. Once we realize our importance, or remember how important we are, just like Corey said, Spindletop, we broke up one of the largest monopolies the United States has ever known. We are what makes the world run. Maybe let people, and remind people about how important our city is, and how important the people are that are part of this city. And I think we've lost that, for whatever reason we have. And I think it's, I think as a council member, that's one of the things that I want to pass down to the people in my ward, and work with the other people on the councils, that we remind our people of Beaumont how important this city is, and how important we are to not just Beaumont, but to the entire world. I mean, we're about to export liquid gas for the first time. That's being built by the unions from people that are from here. I mean, it's amazing. I mean, this is an amazing city, and I think it's just reminding people of how amazing this city is, and how lucky we are to live here. I know there's things that need to be fixed, there's things that need to be fixed everywhere. But it's just, I think when you tell somebody they're no good, eventually they're going to believe it. But if you tell them they're great, and that they're awesome, they're going to believe that, too.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. Ms. Sherwood?
What you say matters. So I will always be found speaking positivity, right? I will always be willing goodness to this community, always. I grew up in this community, in a single-parent household with a dad that was on drugs. I have a master's degree, I have a bachelor's degree, I have an associate's degree, I have two businesses, I have three licenses, and I'm Beaumont bred. So I say that to say this, I'm of the mind-state of, what you've gone through does not define you. Beaumont is one of the best cities on earth. I said it, I meant it, and I'm here to represent it.
And she has dropped the mic. All right. So you're going to pick it up again, though, if you will, madam, because we are going to do our closing statements. You have two minutes. We'll start the clock, and we'll work our way down the row.
I love this community, and I've been found working in this community tirelessly for years, with the elderly, with the young people, with homeless, building businesses, encouraging people, and doing my level best. I'm going to do that at City Hall, and I'm excited about doing it at City Hall. I'm Ladonna Sherwood. Early voting is happening, April 22nd to April 29th, with Election Day being May 3rd. I would love your support, I would love your vote, and I'm asking for your trust. Thank you for having me here today.
Thank you. Mr. Hilliard?
I'm honored to be up here. It was a leap of faith, you know? I think if I told my, my wife knew exactly what I was getting into, she probably would have kicked me out a long time ago. So it's, but it's believing in a city, you know? From the Little League teams I coached, to the flag football teams that I coached, to the uniforms we helped buy for Westbrook, to the football uniforms we helped buy, it's empowering our people, and being a servant of the people. And, you know, I think that we've kind of, some of our leaders have lost that understanding of servitude. And so I want to bring that back, you know? I want to form a coalition of people from churches, to civic groups, to business leaders, so that in some way that we can go back so that it's somebody that we can go back to so we'd never lose the touch with the people of Beaumont or the people of our ward. And hopefully, the council can go and we can sit down. The president has a council. Why would we not want to have a council of people from our community, from all over our community, so that we bring these things to the table and they have a voice at the table, too, not just us? So I'm Joey Hilliard, and I want to serve my city and give back for what this city's given to me and what this city has done for me and my family. And so, you know, I believe in term limits. I don't believe in career politicians. And so early voting starts, April 22nd through 29th. May 3rd is voting. And know that voting, we take it for granted, but a lot of men and women gave their lives for us to have that opportunity, and it's very special, and we should take it that way. And so everyone should vote. And, you know, if you're in Ward 2, I'm the first one, so Hilliard would be awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. Mr. Stiles?
You know, we've got a bright future in southeast Texas, especially in Beaumont. We've spent part of the day talking about a bond issue for the first time in 42 years. We're talking about having downtown hotel convention center. We're talking about bringing infrastructure improvements to the city of Beaumont, looking at the freshwater problems that we have to bring in the city of Beaumont, talk about homelessness in the city of Beaumont. The Chamber made this possible, and I want to thank them for that. There's been a lot of issues that we've talked about today, a lot of important issues. We've got $135 million budget, the revenue. I believe in a balanced budget. I don't believe we need to spend more money than we bring in. And I believe in having that 20% set aside as our reserve fund for disasters and for things that come up that we otherwise don't have the money for. I believe in making sure that we encourage people to get educated. I believe we need to be involved in our public schools and our private schools and help them whenever they're, whether it's through mentorship or working with programs, just simple as reading to the kids in school. I believe that we ought to think about positive things that we have in southeast Texas, like Lamar University. The positive things that we have in southeast Texas, like a willing workforce. The positive things we have in southeast Texas that bring people together whenever we have an opportunity to be brought together. I think that we need to make sure that our parks are in good shape. I think we need to focus on crime and make sure that we have enough police officers. I think we need to make sure that people understand that it takes a lot of time to put together a coalition in Beaumont and that the fact that we need to have people that are willing to serve on the city council. I've had a lot of opportunities to do public service, so I would appreciate your vote, Mark Stiles, in Ward 1.
Thank you, sir. And finally, Mr. Crenshaw?
Well, let me just say that how encouraging was this program. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you to our new president, Amy Lavoy. And thank you all for bringing this back. Regardless of our differences on the issues and politics, isn't it encouraging that you have four people who are all civil and educated and here to share their message about what they think will make Beaumont better? And I'm walking away from this meeting today being more encouraged about this campaign and about our city than I have in a long time. So thank you all to the Chamber and for Amy for making this happen. Elections, in my opinion, are, come down to the issues that you have at your kitchen table at night. People want to be safe in their homes. They want to get a good education, and they want to have water, streets and drainage and infrastructure. And I hope that you look at my background as your district attorney that brought crime down, that you look at my background as a judge that presided over an extremely efficient docket, that administrated justice fairly and consistently, and that you look at my history as an attorney and an advocate for Beaumont and fighting for justice for our citizens. And when you combine all of that together, you understand that I have the experience and the leadership skills necessary to help be my, do my part to lead Beaumont forward. And I'm number one, Ward 1, on the ballot. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Crenshaw. Before we wrap up, I want to invite Amy to say a few words if she wishes.
Yes. I just want to thank you for coming today. I also want to say, Jordan, thank you for being our moderator. Participants, thank you so much. Enjoyed it very much. And I want to welcome you back next Tuesday, April 1st, for our second forum, which will highlight our At-Large candidates. So thank you so much. Thank you, Crime Stoppers, for putting our venue together, and thank you for your time.
Yeah, and just... And for those of you that have been watching online and on television, if you missed any of this or if you would like to watch it again, it will be archived on 12 News Plus on your TV and also on our 12 News YouTube channel. Thank you so much for inviting me to be here. Again, you heard it from the candidates, the early voting begins April 22nd through the 29th. They'll tell me if I'm wrong. And Election Day is Saturday, May 3rd. So thank you all for being here to our wonderful audience. You get a round of applause as well. We had a room full. So same time, next Tuesday, 4 o'clock, for the At-Large Forum. Thank you again for watching, and good night.